Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting this evening of October 28th, 2019. We're in the multipurpose room here in Bennington at the fire facility. And my name is Donald Campbell. I'm the Chair of this Board, and I would like to ask our members to please introduce themselves. Why don't we start on the far, on my far left with Nancy?
Nancy, let's start here.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, Jeanne Jenkins.
I'm Jim Carroll, and just to give you a little warning, I'm going to be leaving early for another meeting, so if you don't think I'm just walking out.
And I'm Jean Conner.
And I'm Stuart Hurd, Town Manager.
Bruce Lee Clark was not able to be with us tonight, but he will be calling in for a portion of the meeting, technology willing. So, before we start our meeting, I'd like to have us all say the Pledge of Allegiance. Jeanie, would you please leave it to me tonight? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, united as one, without any doubt.
Thank you, Jeanie. Well done. So, before we start this meeting, I would like to make two minor additions to the agenda. I would, with the permission of the Board, I would actually like to swap Item 6 for Item 5. I would like to have the fees discussion before we have the management agreement discussion about the why, so we can-
That makes sense.
-put that to bed and just decide whether or not we're moving forward. And then the second is to add a, we have a reason for personnel issues, so to add to executive session both a contract issue, which we knew we had, but also a personnel issue. So, everybody's okay with those changes? We would move forward? Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Hi.
You do.
Let's have a motion, just to be safe. I'm not-
I think I do. I move that we-
Would you like to make a motion?
I move the motion to swap 5 and 6, and to add personnel to the executive session.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll bring that up, it's a part of other business. So, the first item of business tonight is to talk about our consent agenda, maybe not talk about it, maybe just vote it right through. We have the minutes of October 14th, and then we had some routine personnel meetings on the 16th and 20th, which don't have minutes per se, but if there are any additions besides the spelling of Al-
Yes.
Bashavkin, which I'm sure everybody picked up. I do like the name Al Plumpkin.
I know.
And we'll all try not to call him Mr. Plumpkin when we next see him, but besides that, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I totally missed that Al Plumpkin.
If, and the warrants also, which presumably everybody has read deeply and contacted. Stuart, if you have any questions, are there any lingering questions for the manager at this time? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Somewhat.
Okay. Jeanie, I'd say Jeanie barely beat Jim, but it was very close. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so consent agenda is passed. The next item on our docket's going to be very quick, because for the first time since we've been doing this sign-up sheet, we have no sign-ups on the Citizens Comment. So, we will, unless there's anybody that didn't sign up that wanted to say anything, okay. So, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the public hearing of the VTech Trans Bridge 6 on Route 9. And Stuart, would you like to set this up for us?
Sure. We have with us Laura Stone. And Laura, I'm going to let you introduce your compatriots. Laura will be presenting the project, Bridge Number 6 on Route 9. This is a construction project currently scheduled for construction in 2023. But these are first steps that we must go through to decide which project we want, and they will lay out what the VTrans is recommending, and perhaps what the cost implications are as well.
So, this is the Alternatives Presentation Meeting for Bridge 6 over the Loomsack River on Vermont Route 9. I'm Laura Stone, the scoping engineer. We also have Rob Young, the VTrans Project Manager. And we do have a design consultant onboard, StanTech. This is Tom Knight from StanTech. So, the purpose of our meeting, we really want to provide an understanding to our approach to the project. There are quite a few constraints around the bridge project. What alternatives did we look at based on those constraints? Really, we want to provide an opportunity to ask questions, voice concerns, and garner support for a project. Here's a location map. The bridge is located at that green star right there. On Main Street, right between Beach Street and there's Morgan Street. Here's an aerial view. There are quite a bit of houses, businesses around the bridge. There's the Miller's Toll Diner Club, Donovan's, there's the Mobile Station here, and the Safford Mills Inn and Cafe. There's a house right on, one of the shares, a foundation with the bridge, actually. So, there's a lot right there at the bridge. So, meeting overview. First, I want to talk about the VTrans Project Development Process, just to give everybody an idea what that's like. Project overview, so we're going to talk about the existing conditions, the alternatives we considered, and ultimately talk about our recommended alternative. Also want to talk about maintenance of traffic, the schedule, so when you'll see that in construction. Summary and questions. I have questions at the bottom there, but if you have questions at any time throughout the presentation, just raise your hand or interrupt, whatever. So, here's the VTrans Project Development Process. The project has been funded, and this slide is really just to show that we're in a really early stage of project development. We're in this stage called project definition. This is where we identify the resources, so the environmental resources, historic resources, cultural resources. The project constraints, where we evaluate alternatives, come up with a recommended alternative. We have public participation here, which is where we are tonight, and ultimately, we do want to build consensus towards a project. So, after the town decides how they want to proceed with a project, we call that project defined. That's when the project will move into project design. That's when we'll be developing, developing plans, identifying the areas of impact. That's when we're going to be doing the right-of-way process, doing the environmental permits. And after design, oops, the contract will be awarded, and that's when the project will go into construction. So, first clicker question, who are you representing? Does everybody have a clicker that would like one? Okay. A, municipal official; B, resident of Bennington, and you can pick more than two for this slide; C, resident of neighboring town; D, emergency services; E, local business; F, independent organization; G, press; or H, other. Moving on, how often do you use this segment of Vermont Route 9? Daily, weekly, monthly, rarely, or never? How often do you walk over the bridge? A, daily; B, weekly; C, monthly; D, rarely; or E, never? And similarly, how often do you bike over the bridge? A, daily; B, weekly; C, monthly; D, rarely; or E, never? And lastly, what is your reason for attending this meeting? A, specific concern; B, general interest; C, live in close vicinity; or D, other? So, before I go on to the existing conditions, here's just some descriptions of terms that we use in the bridge world. So, oopsie, we have the bridge deck, that's the part that you drive over. The beams, we also call the superstructure. A lot of times, we call the beams and the deck together the superstructure. And then the foundation of the bridge, we refer to as an abutment, or the foundations, or substructure. So, Act 153 of the 2012 legislation was passed in 2012. The local share is reduced by 50% for rehabilitating versus replacement. And again, local share is reduced 50% for closing the road to traffic during construction. So, share can, the town's share in the project can go from 10% to 5% to 2.5%. Here's a picture looking west over the bridge. The roadway is classified as a principal arterial. It is on the National Highway System, is an urban setting, and it's a Class 1 Town Highway. The bridge is a 46-foot-long, 46-foot-span reinforced concrete T-beam bridge owned by the town of Bennington, so there will be a local share here, and constructed in 1923. As you can see, there's quite a bit of aerial utilities that, all around the bridge. Picture looking east over the bridge. There are wide sidewalks over the bridge. They're about nine feet wide over the bridge. It is located in a densely populated area, and the bridge is skewed. There's about a 30-degree skew to the bridge. And again, you can see those aerial utilities that run alongside of the bridge. So, the substructures and the superstructure are in fair condition with a rating of 5. There is significant deterioration of the concrete and bridge seats. There's spalling, voids, and cracks in the abutments. There's settlement cracks in abutment 2. There's drainage features on the bridge that are leaking and saturating concrete members. It's accelerating the deterioration, causing more concrete spalling, so that's concrete that's popping off of the bridge. And the bridge does not meet the minimum hydraulic requirements, and is located within a flood insurance study area. So, there's negative four feet of freeboard at the 50-year design storm, which means water at the 50-year design storm is four feet above the bridge So, here's a picture of the underside of the bridge. That's one of the concrete T-beams. You can see exposed reinforcing. The deck is rated a 6, satisfactory, and the superstructure, or these concrete beams here, rated a 5, fair, and the substructures are rated a 5, fair. Also, I'd like to note in this picture, you can see down below here, there are utilities that run underneath the bridge. There are extensive utilities, underground and aerial, around the bridge. There's an 8-inch clay sewer main from the 1940s, which go underneath the stream, and then they run up Beach Street and Morgan Street. There's also a 10-inch water cast iron water main attached to the underside of the bridge.
I've got a question.
Yes.
With respect to the existing conditions, what is the optimal number that you'd like in this grading system for a bridge?
The optimum, so usually, 10 is the highest rating. Usually, the day after a bridge is constructed, it's rated a 9. There's always some fine map cracking. So, 6 is satisfactory, 7 is good, 8 is very good, 9 is new. And there are communication conduits that run underneath the bridge as well. So, whatever project happens here, there's going to be extensive, an extensive utility project here. Here's a picture of the substructure. There is quite a bit of scour located along the abutment, so water is making its way underneath that abutment there. There's spalling, there's cracks. You can see some efflorescence there.
What does spalling mean?
Spalling is concrete that's cracking off of the bridge. Here's another picture. There's some, there's some voids in the, in the substructure. Another picture, there's exposed reinforcing, and you can see all that aggregate there. That's where concrete has spalled off. Here's the wing wall in the southwest quadrant. The bridge is adjacent to a house with a brick foundation. Here's the footing. Here is one concrete footing, so probably what we'll do here is try to minimize, minimize impacts to this foundation as much as possible, make a saw cut. Here's a picture looking downstream. We do have northern long-eared bat habitat, and that really just restricts the time of year that we can do any tree cutting. We have archaeological resources, historic resources, both Bridge Number 6 and the former Safford-Morgan House at 722 Main Street are considered historic. So, there will be a Section 106-4F process that we have to go through for the historic permitting side. I mentioned the FEMA floodplains. There is a hazardous waste site that's located at the Mobile Station. And utilities, since this, since this is a Class 1 Town Highway, any work with the utility relocation is going to be a reimbursable cost to the town. So, the town would, would hire a consultant to do the design of the, of the utility relocation, but that would all be reimbursed at the, either the 5% rate or the 10% rate, however the town decides to go.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Where did you say the hazardous waste site?
So, the hazardous waste site, actually I have a picture here. It's the Mobile Station right there. It's the gas station. And so, with hazardous waste sites, if we do find any hazardous materials in the soils through excavation, that is a cost that is 100% town, town obligation. And so, that is not a participating cost as part of the project. So, typically, what we do pretty early on in the design process is we can take a couple, couple test borings in the area on either side of the abutments, and if we do find some sort of hazardous waste, we can drive sheet piles. We can try to minimize the amount of hazardous waste that we have to excavate. So, here's the existing layout. The pink portions are sidewalks. This gray portion right here is the bridge. We have these green lines here are the existing right-of-way. North is pointing up, for once. So, we have Beach Street here and Morgan Street here. And these purple lines here are the property lines. This is designated as historic. That is a 4F property type. And that's also designated as archaeologically sensitive. So, the existing typical section, currently, there are 12-foot travel lanes, about nine-foot shoulders, and nine-foot sidewalks. So, there's a nine-foot sidewalk on either side, nine-foot shoulder on either side, and then two 12-foot travel lanes. Here's the existing profile. So, this is like you're standing in the river, looking at the bridge. There is, I mean, it's a pretty flat grade there. There's really not much that we can do to modify the grade, just because of hydraulics. We don't want to raise the approaches, because that could make like a damming effect if there was ever a flood. So, design criteria and considerations. There's an ADT of 9,800 vehicles per day, design hourly volume, so that's your peak hour volume, of 1,000 vehicles per hour, percent trucks of 4.6, a design speed of 30 miles per hour, and again, there are extensive utilities around the bridge. So, alternatives we considered, we looked at the no-action. There is additional maintenance that's going to be required in the next 10 years, so we would not recommend the no-action alternative. Next, we looked at a minor rehabilitation, a superstructure replacement, and a full bridge replacement on alignment. All of these options would have the same eight-foot, 12-foot, 12-foot, 8-foot typical. And we'd be looking at a 15-year design life, a 30-year design life, or a 100-year design life, and I go into detail of these alternatives in the next slide. So, a minor rehabilitation, here's the typical section. Really, what we would do is we would remove any deteriorated concrete and, and repair it with new concrete. The typical would be the exact same typical as existing. We would repair both the superstructure and the substructure, have new bridge joints, and we'd put a new membrane and pave, which would protect it from future water infiltration. Would match the existing typical section, and we would expect about a 15-year design life out of that. Alternative 2, a superstructure replacement. Again, the typical section is going to be the same for all of these alternatives, as it does meet the minimum standards, as set forth in the Vermont State Standards.
Can you give the dollar amounts when you make those alternatives?
Yeah. So, after we go through the alternatives, I do have an alternatives matrix that compares all of the costs, if you can, if you can wait for that.
I'm impatient.
I don't remember all the, all the numbers off the top of my head. So, the superstructure replacement would consist of a new deck and beams on the existing substructures. There would be concrete repairs needed to the substructures, any of that spalling concrete. We would take any unsound concrete off and, and patch it up. It would have the same typical section, and we would expect about 30 years out of a superstructure replacement project. Full bridge replacement, again, same typical section. It would have all-new bridge components, so we would remove the deck, beams, the substructures, or the foundations, and put in all-new bridge components. It would not meet the minimum hydraulic standard, because it is so substandard hydraulically, there's really nothing here that we can do to meet the minimum standard. And because this is on the National Highway System, we would design to 100-year design life. That means we would put stainless steel reinforcing into the bridge. Proposed profile, it would match existing. Like I said, we can't really raise the approaches or anything, because that could make a damming effect in a flood situation. There are also a lot of constraints on either side of the, of the bridge. So, our recommended alternative here is a full bridge replacement. Would have 12-foot, 8-foot typical with nine-foot sidewalks on each side. It'd have a span length of approximately 50 feet, would remain hydraulically inadequate, and we would choose the most shallow superstructure as possible to improve the hydraulics as much as possible. And again, we would be designing to 100-year design life. So, maintenance of traffic options considered. We looked at an off-site detour. We looked at short-term lane closures for the minor rehab option only, and that would be during off-peak hours. And also phased construction, because of the high traffic volumes, two-way traffic needs to be maintained at all times. We do also have to maintain pedestrians, because there's sidewalk on the bridge. So, there's, there's two options that we looked at for phased construction. One maintains two-way traffic, vehicular traffic over the bridge, and detours pedestrians. And the other option maintains pedestrians and one way of traffic, and detours the other direction of traffic. So, a road closure. The detour would be signed by the state, because this is on a Class, Class 1 Town Highway. Detour distance, so that's the truck distance on 279, is 5.4 miles end-to-end. There is also a local passenger car detour. We would recommend a 60-day closure with incentive disincentive. So, incentive disincentive is, we tell the contractor, for every day that you finish early before that 60-day mark, we give you money, and for every, every hour that they finish after that 60 days, they pay, they pay us money. We would allow nighttime work, and the local share would be reduced by 50% per Act 153. So, here's the off-site detour for trucks. It's pretty straightforward. It's Route 7 to Route 279, has an end-to-end distance of 5.4 miles. Here's also a local detour, which could be used by passenger cars and pedestrians, either on Coolidge Ave. or Gage Street. There's a couple different options that we can look at. We can look at one-way vehicular traffic on Coolidge, and maintain pedestrians on Coolidge as well, or we could maintain two-way traffic on Coolidge, and detour pedestrians onto Gage Street. And that's really something that we would work with the town to determine what would be best. And that is .6 to .8 miles end-to-end. So, phased construction, option 1, this would be two-way traffic maintained. This would be phase 1, so the traffic would be maintained on this southern portion of the bridge while we construct the northern portion. We switch traffic over onto the new portion of the bridge, and construct the southern portion. Option 2, very similar. We maintain one-way, one-way traffic with pedestrians as well while constructing half of the bridge, switch them over onto the new section while we construct the rest of the bridge. So, our recommended scope is a full bridge replacement with traffic maintained on an off-site detour. We would recommend a 60-day closure. Detour would be signed by the state, but we'd work with the town to determine the best routes possible. Would be, it would match the typical section currently, so the 12-foot travel lanes, eight-foot shoulders, and nine-foot wide sidewalk on both sides. The sidewalk does jet in just past the bridge, so we could look at reducing the width of the sidewalk, if that's something that the town wanted to consider. Span length would be approximately 50 feet, basically matches existing. Does not meet the minimum hydraulic standard, but none of the options would meet the minimum hydraulic standard. We'd work with the town to determine the railing type, as this is in a historic district, and it is a historic bridge. We'd want a pretty railing. That's also crash-tested for the National Highway System. We would be designing to 100-year design life. Right-of-way is needed, aerial utility relocation is needed, and a municipal and buried utility relocation is needed.
What does that phrase, hydraulic standard, mean?
Hydraulic standard. So, we design our bridges to the 50-year hydraulic, hydraulic storm, so that's, you know, the one-in-50-year storm. We like to have one foot of freeboard at that storm, so the water level at that storm should be one foot below the lowest, the lowest point of the bridge. So, we'd like it to be one foot below. Right now, it's the water line at that 50-year storm is four feet above.
So, what you, when you mean that hydraulic standard, if the water were to rise up to that, that optimal height, it would be able to withstand the pressure of that water? Is that what you mean?
So, what this means is that at the 50-year storm, we expect water to be overtopping the bridge.
Okay.
And there's really, there's, just because of all the constraints on all quadrants of the bridge, there's really nothing that we can, we can do to make that better. We can make it a little bit better. We can make a more shallow superstructure, which will give us, you know, a couple inches afloat, but we're, we're never going to meet the standard here.
Can I ask, and this might be off-topic, but at the same time that we're looking at this bridge, can we look at ways to mitigate flooding in that area, since we know, I'm just thinking, if, if it's four feet above the bridge, that also means that Miller's Toll and the, you know, and the gas station and everybody around it is flooded. So, it feels like maybe that's a time when we ought to also just be looking at how to channel that water, or broaden it out someplace else.
I think, given the same constraints of the surrounding properties, I think there's little you can do to mitigate flooding, if, if in fact, we get a 50-year event that impacts that stream.
On the positive side, the single best flood attenuation place that we have in the town of Bennington is the Morgan Street Welland, in terms of being able to absorb and hold water.
That's true.
So, and slowly release it.
So, here's the cost matrix. The costs range from about, total project costs range from about $600,000 to about $4 million. The superstructure replacement, off-site detour is about 1.7 million with a town share of 43,000, or with phased construction, about 2.5 million with a- Or with phased construction, about 2.5 million with a town share of 125,000. The full bridge replacement options, off-site detour, we expect the project to be around $3 million or a town share of about $150,000. With phased construction, because the town share goes up from 5% to 10%, with a more expensive project, the cost for the town does go to about $400,000. So there's a lot in this slide. I don't know if anybody wants to digest it for a minute and ask any questions or if you're ready for me to move on or if you want me to explain any, anything else.
There is a lot in this slide and we will have plenty of chances to dig into it more deeply. But it would be nice to make this available to anybody that wants to see it.
Yep, so we have, we have a structure SharePoint site, which is a public facing site that we put all, all of our project information on, like future plans, submittals, any public presentations will go up on that site. And I believe Stuart has the, the link to that website. So this will be up probably as early as tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you.
So next clicker slide. What would be the maximum acceptable length of closure for Bridge 6? A, 30 days? B, 45 days? C, 60 days? D, 90 days? Or E, a closure is not acceptable? Okay. Which time of year would be most acceptable for Bridge number 6 to be closed? May to June? June to July? July to August? August to September? During summer break so it doesn't interfere with school bus routes? Or F, other? So preliminary project schedule, right now, we do expect this to be in construction in 2023. That's where we show it in our, in our, our costs. We have the funding in that year. That does have some float by, by one year either way, just based on fiscal constraints. Total cost estimate of 3.1 million and a town share of 157,000 is what we're estimating right now. Which design aspect is most important to you? Shoulder with bicycle accommodations? The bridge railing? Construction year? Construction duration? E, cost? Or F, other? Which would you be most concerned about? A, construction delays on Vermont Route 9? B, detour distance? C, duration of detour? D, bridge aesthetics? E, business impacts? F, environmental impacts? G, recreational impacts? H, other? Or I, not really concerned? Okay. Did you find this presentation to be too technical in nature, too simplified? C, just about right? Or D, not much use at all? It's anonymous, so you can be honest. And do you find the recommended scope of work satisfactory?
What does that mean?
Do you agree with a full bridge replacement and with the off-site detour?
Not that this vote is binding.
It is not.
On any of us, just to say.
Nope, so we do not need an answer tonight. You guys can discuss it at future select board meetings before getting back to us and how you want to proceed. Or if you have any questions after this meeting, certainly. Feel free to reach out.
Laura, so in the, in the full bridge replacement, you're taking everything out?
Mm-hmm.
Abutments, everything, right down?
Everything.
Okay.
There will be, just because the wing walls, I believe it's the southwest side where it shares that brick foundation and there's also the Miller's Toll diner. Those wing walls there, for the brick foundation, that butts right up to the building. And then Miller's Toll, that wing wall there kind of holds up their outside seating area, that patio. And so what we'll do is we'll probably saw cut those wing walls and, and butt up to existing concrete. But.
So this can't be called a rehabilitation?
No, full bridge replacement.
Yes, I understand.
So here's a list of next steps. Right now, we're going to wait for a response from the town on how you want to proceed. After we get a response, we'll develop conceptual plans and distribute for comment at that point. If the town wants to discuss the conceptual plans, we can hold another public meeting. We process local agreements, the finance and maintenance agreement, and go through the right-of-way process. So here is the website where this presentation, as well as any future plans, submittals, will be, will be up.
Great, thank you.
Questions, comments?
I would like, Jeannie has a question, but I, I'd like to suggest to the board, since we've already seen this presentation once before. Laura, thank you very much for coming and, and doing this again and apologize for the last time. But if, if the board would be willing, there are a lot of people here that would like to ask questions and I'd like to just move directly to citizens' comment instead of going through the board comment first. That be all right?
Can I just ask timing?
Except for Jeannie, who's going to ask one question.
Okay, no, I just wanted to know the timing. When you're saying that we should get back to you, if this is slated for 2023, do we have a year to talk about this? Do we have months? Just wanted to know.
So because there is right-of-way, there is the historic permitting piece, there's extensive utility relocations, that is a pretty tight design schedule. So if you wait a year to get back to us, that's okay. You can wait a year, but that's going to push it out into, into another funding year. So you might not see the bridge until, say, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
There's no imminent danger that it's going to collapse? I think that's probably central to.
So our inspectors, they, right now, I believe this is on a two-year inspection cycle, so they go out every two years. If they see something that they're worried about, they, they'd notify you that you would need to fix it. But right now, it's, I mean, it's rated fair to satisfactory. You don't have any elements that are in poor condition. So they will notify you if there's, if there's something they find critical.
All right, so with the board's permission, I'd like to open it up for citizens' comment. And if, if the board has burning questions at the end, let's see how our time works out. Board, we will have plenty of time to chew on this. So let's give a, let's give a chance for any citizens who would like to comment on this to come on up. Or maybe there are none, in which case the board will keep asking questions. Yeah, if, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. If you'd come to the mic, please, that'd be great and identify yourself, even though half of Bennington knows who you are. Okay, thanks, Jim.
John Redding from Miller's Toll and Safford Mills. We're on board with whatever is going to be done. I just, of course, our main concern is, you know, we have two businesses right there. I heard she was talking about even nighttime scheduling. You know, that would certainly be kind of an issue for us with, you know, having a place that has guests staying overnight. So that would be something we'd be concerned about. And then, you know, just the not having any traffic being able to go through. And as a side note, with your detours, we can speak to this as well because we live right there. Coolidge Ave is already very busy. So trying to put more traffic down Coolidge Ave is definitely going to be an issue, I think, so.
So our original, our original, original proposal was to detour all traffic onto the 279 to 7.
Right.
Route, but there was concerns about business impacts with everybody detoring around, out of downtown.
Right.
And so really, that's something that we can work with, with the town if they would prefer a local detour or if we want to detour all cars around 279, that's, or if you want to detour one-way traffic around 279 and put one way through the town. I mean, there's a lot of options there. In terms of nighttime work, there are certain, certain decibels, so we can't be like jackhammering at, at midnight. There would be lighting up. I don't know if Rob, if you want to add anything to that?
I'm sorry, would you come to the mic, please? Thank, thank, you do mic is fine, thank you very much.
With the schedule that we have now with 60 days, it's, we allow the contractor to work 24/7, but you're going to get a lot, I know when you condense a project, they may work that, but with this length of timeframe, it's most likely you'd have one crew. So one crew is not going to work 24 hours a day. They're going to have one crew that's going to work long summer days, which is typical in Vermont. That would be the more, the schedule that they would work. Until you get more condensed, like weekend closures, that's when you'd have a 24-hour crew where you'd have noise at night. But in this case, we have provisions in the, in the contract where there would be a decibel limit for any night work.
Can I follow up on that? So you'd be, you're talking about a five-day work week per construction?
We allow them 24/7 during the closure.
Okay.
But a typical contractor with the schedule would likely work six days a week, 10 to 12-hour days.
Okay.
Right, so our, like I said, my, our main concern would be, yeah, I think even for other businesses in the area, to maintain some sort of traffic, pedestrian and cars to be able to go across that bridge, I think would work best. I think for the businesses in the area, just to, there's a lot of people that walk up and down there as well. A side note question, the sub-hydraulic standards. Does this bridge get insured for, if there is a, normally if there was a flood and something like that happened, would it be covered by insurance of some sort for anything?
The bridge itself?
Yes.
No, I mean, the bridge would be, since it's town-owned, FEMA would be involved for town-owned structures and then the state would rely on federal, other federal dollars and if that case, similar to.
Now, if it's a sub-hydraulic standard bridge, would it still be covered?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, for the future, you're.
Yes, for the future. Just if something happened to it, if it's not beating the standards.
Correct, you wouldn't invest in this bridge and then if something happened like the next year, all of a sudden you wouldn't be covered.
Gotcha. And another question, you were mentioning the abutments in the foundation of the bridge on our side, the Miller's Toll, you were, you were going to basically cut that out and put new stuff in. What about if some of that foundation that's there on that wall, by cutting it out, is that going to affect the strength of that going forward or how do you tie that in?
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. I know the survey's already been there to kind of map things out, but we would have to get in and try to figure out what our strategy is for the new bridge, kind of where our construction limit would be. Because that's not determined, you know? Where do we, exactly where do we cut that, what the condition of that wall is? Are you talking about the patio? Is that the wall you're concerned about?
Yeah, that area and just there, there's a wall that's kind of attached to the bridge foundation that's part of that.
Yeah, we was just there tonight and the integrity of that wall is not that great.
Yep.
So that's be something that we could work out through the property owner process. So I guess a little history is that at one point, the state and the town issued the right-of-way. When they issued the right-of-way, they didn't consider any of the features. So it's likely that that wing wall was placed when the bridge was placed, which preceded the right-of-way.
Yeah.
And so now it's just a line on paper. So even though it was built, the bridge, you actually own that retaining wall. But that's be something that we can look at, the details with the right-of-way process on how we can, can work on that. We don't want to, I guess, scope creep and to start designing retaining walls up the river.
Right, I just was concerned about what's there. If you cut it, what's going to happen to that wall?
Yeah, right. And so there is some sensitivity things that the contractor can do on different situations. We have a historic building, so there's vibration monitoring and things like that that we can do to make sure the integrity of existing foundations are, are kept intact.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before you sit down, it's, it's nice to have you here in front of us. There are a couple of businesses that would be most affected by this and yours is certainly, or two of yours are right at the very top of the list.
Yep.
And I think we've been scratching our heads about the best way to go about this. You know, the, the three options that we have are do nothing, which seems foolish and, and like a recipe for a lawsuit when the first truck, you know, caves in the bridge.
Right.
Get it fixed in phases, more slowly, more expensive, takes longer. Or close the bridge entirely for a short period of time, but entirely close it and have it cost less. And those are kind of our three choices. And I'd be very interested to know what you, as a downtown merchant and one of the people that would be most affected by this, think we should do.
Right.
And, you know, if you were designing this process, what would you, what would it look like?
Well, it's a couple of tough questions to answer, but you're saying if it was totally closed, it would be 30 days? That about right?
60 days.
60 days altogether?
Right now. It's really early in the process, so we haven't done exactly details. That's kind of our window we're working with.
Right.
As we develop our design, we'll have a better idea of what that.
And it would have to start in May? Couldn't start April?
So the, the challenge that we have to do is dealing with the environmental folks. They're going to look at the stream and figure out what species of fish is in there. And they typically don't want us to start with some species until July 1st. Some is June 1st. But there are certain things the contractor can do, they can work with our air and our folks, where they can separate the work from the stream. They can try to be proactive. I've, have not been successful in the past.
Yeah.
Typically, June 1st is, seems to be the, the acceptable time.
Okay.
As far as the in-stream work is concerned.
Right.
And that's the first thing that's going to happen. We're going to have to take out the old abutments, which is right next to the.
Right, so you wouldn't be able to even start till May? You're saying it would be.
The contractor can mobilize early and there could be some things because you have all these utilities. I mean, there's a lot of work that can be done before the closure starts.
Right.
So it won't be the entire construction, it won't be 60 days, right? The contractor's going to have to mobilize, do a lot of prep work and then the clock will start, you know, full bridge closure and then open in 60 days. So the contractor's going to be doing work before and after.
Right, of course, the busiest time for Bennington, I would say, is from June through October, of course. And that's the times you're talking about.
That's construction season as well, so.
As far as maintenance of the bridge and, you know, doing as little as possible, you said that something might have to be done 10 or 15 years later. Is that correct?
For the maintenance option?
Yes.
I think Laura can ask that. The, so the idea was that if we do the, the maintenance scope? The small scope?
Yep.
That those, it's only a short-term repair. So basically, you're kicking the can down the road. In 15 years, you're going to have to address this issue again.
And it's quite expensive relatively, on a year-by-year basis.
On an annual, right. The annual is just going to keep, right.
Right, so it makes more sense to do a, a full replacement at some point. And what, the question I think is whether we do a phased replacement, half and half, and it takes longer and we pay more, but we keep the road open.
Right.
Or we do a full closure for 60 days, cost less, but we have the pain and agony for 60 consecutive days.
Right. I guess the big thing for us, and I would say for even any of the surrounding businesses there, if you're talking about starting and having to close it totally down from June through October, that's a tough one.
No, it would only be, it would only be 60 days.
No, I know that, so at some time in between June and October for 60 days. That's kind of tough.
Would May-June be better?
I think it would be helpful because I feel like things really start to kick in in June, you know? But if it could happen in May, that would be, you know, I would, we'd probably be in favor of that kind of option because it would be out of the way and done.
So this would be a matter of working on the, the wetlands and the.
It would be the fisheries.
Fisheries and, yeah, okay. So, but that, that might be something that we could let you work out.
Yeah.
So talk about phased construction. The phased construction project, it would likely take more than a construction season and there's going to be slow-moving traffic. Traffic's going to be backed up. There's going to be traffic jams. There is heavy, heavy traffic through the project area. And you might see cars detoring around anyway because, because traffic is backed up.
Right.
And it is a much longer duration.
Can I ask what the noise level, so if you did phase, does it mean you have the same jackhammers and stuff happening, but just for a longer period of time while traffic is backed up?
Yes, it would be.
Yes, it would be the same, although we would, you know, likely just be five days a week. They'd be limited, no nighttime work.
Okay, okay. Can I just ask a question? So, um, can any of the businesses along your side be accessed from, I don't have the street in my head. Is it Coolidge? Can, can you access from the back?
No, Coolidge is behind, there's two layers of houses there, so that's.
Okay.
Yep.
I've put you on the spot a little bit tonight, but you're a good sport about it. I think, I'd just like to leave the door open to further communication, certainly with our town manager, but also with the board.
Yeah.
You know, we, I think we see this as one of those unpleasant things we have to get done, and would like it to be as, the least painful process possible.
Yeah, we certainly understand it needs to be done. It's a very old bridge, and we've been here for a long time, and have seen it kind of falling apart a little bit as time has gone by, so it's a necessary evil, and, you know, if we can move that construction a little bit earlier, I think we would be really in favor of trying to just shut it all down and do it.
That's really, really helpful.
Right away. I can't speak for any of the other people that are down there, but I think they would probably rather have it done quicker rather than dragging it out.
Okay.
Is it possible to do a survey? I know not everyone can make a meeting, but I would like to kind of know what other people would think about options, to poll the other residents or businesses in the area, just to have the info on what they want.
That's a good thought. Sure.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's keep that thought kind of warm and see what else we hear tonight. So, great, thank you, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Other citizens that would like to speak on this issue tonight? No? All right. Well, any further comments from, oh yeah, please, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right. Just, just a quick.
Please introduce yourself.
Afterthought, of course. Sandy Redding, owner of 722 Main. So I'm just a property owner and, and assistant at the businesses.
Uh-huh.
How will you allow these people who are involved in the area to be part of your decision process? Is there any way to have anybody be involved in your decision-making process, or, you know, to keep you apprised of how people are thinking about that?
Well, as with everything, we need to do it in open session at a select board meeting. This is, the way I'm imagining it, and Stuart, you might have some better ideas on this, but is that, you know, we receive this information, we chew on it, we bring it up at another warned meeting, we discuss it and, and decide what kind of direction we'd like to give our town manager, and then he goes forth and, and makes that happen. So I, I expect that there would be another opportunity to talk about this.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Stu, you did, we did send out notices to all property owners. Were they just abutting property owners, or within geographic?
We sent notices to everybody on Main Street from Safford to Bradford.
Okay.
Of the meeting. They also gave Laura's contact information. They could have contacted my office, and I think the website was included in that notice.
Okay.
If you, so I know you've already settled in, but if you have any thoughts, we'd love to hear them on when you think the best, what the best approach would be. I think, I can't speak for the whole board, but I know I, I got one call from an individual whose name shall remain anonymous, but it rhymes with Estino. And Sam, Sam said, "Do it as fast as you can and get it over with." So I, I do think there's some sentiment out there, which is get it done and get it done quickly. I think that would probably be the, especially if it's cheaper, that would be the direction this board is leaning, and so we would need to be convinced probably otherwise if we wanted to either slow it down or make it more expensive. Is that fair? Board members? Okay. Other comments from the citizenry on this? Other comments from the board? Things that you're thinking about? Janie?
I'm just wondering if we can put this, say, we're putting it on the agenda for, I don't, I'm making this up, for, you know, two meetings from now, or three meetings from now, but go ahead and set a time to discuss it again, in case there are additional people who are not able to be here tonight who would like to come. And also, I think for all of us to be able to look at the slideshow and sort of look at those numbers again, particularly, and the options.
Does feel like that sheet of numbers is probably one of the things that we, we have to study most closely.
Yeah.
Before our next conversation. Stuart, what's your, your thought on timing of this?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think that if, if people can get to the site, can go over the numbers, we can take comments from, from folks in Bennington anytime, either via email or a phone call. I haven't had any comments since the letter went out, so people need to avail themselves of the opportunity if they have some thoughts. But we meet again on November 11th and November 25th, and if in fact we're going to be able to digest the information more carefully, then we probably ought to decide that we're going to make a decision either on the 11th or the 25th, because we really don't, from my perspective, we don't want to slow down the design process, because that simply pushes everything further out. And the options are relatively clear. I was presented with a form that the agency likes us to fill out, that when we decide which option we want, we can add comments regarding the project, and they do ask for your signatures. So there, there are opportunities here, I think, for people to make suggestions and perhaps get some input. I, I, I mean, I, the 60-day schedule, that anticipates 24/7?
That's what we allow, by contractually, that's what we allow the contractor to do. Correct. But it's typical that the contractor would normally have one crew and work a normal summer construction day, 10 to 12 hours, six days a week for a 60-day.
So, yeah, 10 to 12, six days is what we'd be thinking. Thank you. I mean, I, I think that's one of those realistic suggestions that we would want to make.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
I'm assuming John knows his business better than any of us, but do you guys have research? Like, is the economic impact less if you condense it into, it seems like it would be, a full closure, 60 days? Is that the best that, that we can do for local businesses?
It, it's, it's a, it's a different type of philosophy. You're right. It's that long-term, where people don't think there's an impact, but, you know, it's day after day, it's unpredictable, and it lasts a long time.
Okay.
The idea where we can just get in, get out.
Okay.
You know, big impact, short duration.
Okay. I assumed that John was correct, but I just was wondering if there was research to back it up. Good.
Yeah, there's, there's, I guess ABC Construction has been, the Accelerated Bridge Program has been in Vermont since 2011, and so we're, we're one of the few states that have adopted a program specifically for this, because it's been so successful. So, and we, we're going to keep continuing, kind of beating that drum, because we know you can do things faster and cheaper.
Okay.
So I think, you know, two new things I heard from your last presentation were the idea of the local detour, which I appreciate the fact that you brought that up in terms of not kind of annihilating our downtown business during that stretch of time, and also, I don't know exactly what you were talking about, about sidewalk reductions. I'm not particularly interested in reducing the side of the sidewalk unless there's a very significant cost savings to us, but I doubt there would be, given the cost share. So I, I guess I would be disinclined to make those sidewalks any smaller. So that, that's how I feel about it. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about it. Other comments from the board?
Can we, can we set a date? Can we, can we do the 25th?
I was going to say, I'd prefer the 25th, because Veterans Day is the 11th, and probably just be better to do a non-holiday day.
Yeah, so if we consider this again, you don't want to come back for that, do you? Nope. Twice is enough. All right. Well, why don't we set, so what was that? Which date did we land on? November 25th? Okay. Can somebody remind me, I don't know who, what date was Jonah Spivak talking about for the semi-sesquicentennial, or whatever it is in Bennington? Do you remember?
That's years away.
Is that years and years away?
Yeah, like seven years.
Seven years? Okay.
That's a while. You don't even think about that, Donald. Let that go.
We'll, we'll have the bridge done before then.
All right. Let's have the bridge done before then. I would ask board members to please pass your clickers this way, so we can get them off the table. And thank you both very much for coming down and giving us this informative presentation. And we will, we'll be getting back to you shortly.
And Donald, just confirm, November 25th is when we're going to hear this again?
I should.
We have the economic development folks coming that, that week, but I, I don't think that that's, that maybe all is on the schedule at this point.
I'm just, we're just, I'm just looking at the future meeting date. Yeah, right now, that looks like a good date.
Yeah, let's keep.
November 25th for that. So, thank you, Laura. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Tom. Have a safe drive home. We are going to move on to item number six. We have switched our agenda around, and the reason for this, if I could, I could just take a minute. It felt to me like we missed the forest for the trees a little bit at our last meeting. As we, most of the comments had to do with fees, and it felt like what was missed a little bit in that is all of the opportunity for programmatic expansion that we've worked so hard to get at our rec center. And we've heard many, many meetings about the, the new programs that are available for the seniors and that are available for kids and summer camps, and I think it's worth just reminding everybody that this was our, this was the town of Bennington's idea, so we sought the Y out and tried to lure them to Bennington to come and up, up the ante for our recreation program. So what I would like to do is to start the conversation by saying, if we approve this management agreement with the couple of changes that we came up with at our last meeting, what would the fee structure look like? And, and this is very simple, because during the course of the week, we've had some further thinking on this, and I think what we've, what we'd like to, what I'd like to propose to the board is that we, and I've talked to many of you about this individually, but I, is that we leave the rates the same for the upcoming year, all rates. Corporate membership rates, residential rates, non-residential rates, birthday party rates, everything. If I got that right, Stuart?
Yes.
Did I miss anything? Okay.
No, you haven't hit everything, but you're, you're on the right track.
I mean, in theory, the select board's duty is to, every year is to look at the budget and to figure out what the rate should be. Now, I know I came out fairly strongly at the last meeting on the point that Bennington taxpayers shouldn't be subsidizing non-resident payers inordinately, but we did hear some compelling testimony that local communities may need more time to adapt to this. And so by keeping rates absolutely stable for one year, it gives us the opportunity, and I would ask maybe our manager to do this, to reach out to other communities and see if there's an opportunity for treating this as a regional recreation center, and having other communities pitch into it, much in the same way that communities, different communities pitch into the library. But it also just gives us a, a year to anticipate, anticipate that this might be coming. So for the non-residential communities, you know, a good, a good solid year to be able to talk to their select people and figure out what might be done there. So the hope would be that, that we could, you've, you've all seen this rate structure, the current rate, center, recreation membership rates. Stuart supplied us with the camp rates and the corporate rates, and so I guess I'd like to, I'd like to ask this board if it would be acceptable to hold all these rates stable for at least one year, and then reconsider them as every select board must at budget season next year.
Mm-hmm.
Does that seem like a reasonable approach to the community?
Absolutely.
Yes, and then I do think, I mean, I was, I was very surprised to hear that we haven't changed, we haven't looked at these rates, or revised these rates in the last 10 years. We've looked at them, but we haven't revised them in the last 10 years.
No, we have not.
So I do think after this year, we do need to start looking at cost of living increase or some kind of increase to maintain what we have and be able to build on it.
Well, everybody knows I'm cheap, and I'm doing everything I can to sort of not push for a 3% increase this year.
Yeah.
But I think, I, I think, and I don't mean to, residents, I mean to reduce the impact on residential taxpayers, but, but I think if we hold the rates stable for a year, that will give us an opportunity to have a paced conversation about who, who attends, who goes to the Y and what they need, or who goes to the recreation center, what they need, what local communities can do, and how we could work together on this. Does that sound good?
Do we have an approximate date on when these would be, these rates would be good till? Are we going to go January 1 of next year? Is it November of next year?
Well, it feels only reasonable that, that we set the rates during budget season. Now, suppose propane, or something like that, you know, we have a huge propane, suppose the cost of propane doubles. You know, we're going to have to change the rate. Suppose insurance rate double, we're going to have to change the rate.
So July 1?
So it feels to me like it would be set at a budget session to change to July 1. Is that how you'd see it, Stuart?
Well, I, I would, I would recommend that if you're, if you're going to consider it in a year, that you look to October, November of next year to consider the change, because that helps us develop the budget, because we understand what revenue.
What's coming?
To anticipate.
Okay.
And then it really is a year.
Well, and ideally, every select board should be going through the work of working on this and crunching the numbers and talking to the community, and looking at the propane bills and figuring out what the fees should be, right?
It also gives us the opportunity, I mean, as we modernize our membership structure, our membership, what is it? Our membership box. So right now, we're using a rolodex, card rolodex, so we don't really know who our members are, we don't know who's paying what. So I think as that gets computerized, then we'll be able to look and see how many, how many Bennington residents do we have? North Bennington, Old Bennington, Shaftesbury, Powell. Who's paying what? Who's here on a corporate rate? I mean, I think we don't, we don't even know what we have right now, because we're working off the card rolodex, so.
Right, so get.
The year will give us the time on that.
There is a computer system at the rec center. Does that mean you guys weren't able to obtain the information about residents, non-residents that you asked for at the last meeting?
It's, it's, it's unclear, as I understand it, because you could be a Shaftesbury resident, but a, but a corporate member, so there, there are a lot of crossovers that, that will take some un-teasing.
We did ask for that information, we did ask for that information, and we weren't able to get it, because it's such a mess, it's so complicated.[1670.51] able to get it because it's such a mess, it's so complicated, yep. And so, so part of your comment last week, or last meeting, you know, the thought on Shaftesbury is, well, if we knew how many people from Shaftesbury were using it, it'd be a much easier conversation with the town of Shaftesbury to say, hey, you have 50 people that are using the rec center, how about if we look at some sort of community-based fee structure that works for everybody? So that in theory, maybe if Shaftesbury was putting in a certain amount of money, maybe the Shaftesbury people could have a similar rate structure to what the Bennington residents have if the numbers worked out, so. But we have to get the, we have to get a few things settled. We need to get data, we need to get just on an even keel, and I think we need to give people time, which is what we heard from you last week and others, to try to work this out, so.
And I think it's fair to just keep the rates where they're at and what people have been paying. There's no change, so.
I was supposed to call Bruce. I am so sorry Bruce.
Is it for this part of the conversation?
He wanted to be on the whole thing.
I'm sorry.
I have.
I failed my reminder.
You were supposed to remind me.
I know, I didn't have it here.
The one thing I asked you to do.
Sorry!
I want a new, I want a new vice chair. Bruce.
Hi Bruce, it's my fault.
This is Donald. Jeanie has something to say to you.
I'm so sorry.
Bruce, have you been watching on TV?
No.
Okay. Thank God. Let me summarize.
I'm not sorry.
Let me summarize briefly then Bruce. I'm sorry if Cat TV can't hear you, I'll try to turn it up as loud as I can hear. Put on Jim's mic. Hey Bruce, say something, would you please?
Yes, okay.
You getting that?
Can you hear me?
Great, technology's a wonderful thing. So Bruce, thank you. We inadvertently started without you, I apologize, I know you wanted to be part of this conversation, but.
That's okay.
What I was, thank you for your forgiveness, what I was proposing to the board is that we look at a one-year rate freeze despite the fact that rates haven't gone up in about 10 years, so that local communities have a chance to sort of adapt and enter into conversations with the town of Bennington and figure out how we make this work for everybody. So that would be corporate rates, residential rates, non-residential rates, marauders, guppies, whatever, no.
Right.
You name it. Stay stable for the year while we, while we kind of get into this and not lose track of the fact of the bigger goal, which is that we're really trying to work hard to optimize our recreation center and make it do as much as it can for the community.
And I would agree with that.
Okay, great.
Can you also tell me you reversed the order?
Oh, Bruce, I also reversed the order on the agenda because I felt last week, we spent so much time talking about fees that, as I say, we lost the forest for the trees and we, we forgot to talk about what a great opportunity this is for our community. So I wanted to get the money piece out of the way first tonight, so that we could then have a conversation about this management agreement. Does that sound okay to you?
That sounds perfectly fine.
Okay. And I think I've got, I think I heard from, I don't know if I can do this without hanging up on you, but I think I heard from Bill Scully that he is voting in favor of the rec center with no increases in rates. So thank you Bill for checking in by text. That's, that's great to hear from you. Our thoughts are out there with you. So I think, I think this would be, let's see, do we need to vote on this? It seems funny to vote on it before we vote on the management agreement, but I think these rates would be, seems to me these rates would be the rates whether or not we enter into a management agreement, right?
Right, because it's us, yeah.
Because we're setting them now and we're going to set them again next year and we're going to set them the year after that. I may not, but other people will. So, so I would accept, I would, well, is there any conversation?
I just want to make sure that people really understand that the rates are completely separate from the management agreement. The rates are under our control. The management agreement is something separate. I just want to make sure that people really understand that.
Yeah, and that, yeah, thank you Jeanie for that.
Yeah.
And I think that's, the decoupling is really important in this particular situation, yeah. So do I have a motion on this particular item?
Yes, I make a motion that for the next year, so October to October, that there be no rate increase on any rates regarding the recreation center. Is that complete?
I think so. I'll second that. Okay, Chad has seconded it. Is there any conversation? Are you still with us Bruce?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any comments that you'd like to?
No, I, I don't, I agree with that wholeheartedly.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on to the next piece of this, which is I think much more fun and more exciting. This is the, the management agreement between the town of Bennington and the Berkshire Family YMCA. The two items that were identified as in need of change last week have been changed. Bruce, I think you probably have seen this, they.
Yes, I have.
The additional agreement details, the following is now in. If there's a dispute between the parties that's not timely resolved, then either party may request that the dispute be mediated by a mediator reasonably acceptable to both parties. The cost of mediation shall be shared equally by both parties. If the mediation is unsuccessful, or if both parties agree not to mediate the dispute, then this agreement may be terminated by either party upon 30 days' written notice to the other party. So that is, that is the change. It's a relatively easy agreement to get out of, which I hope we never, which I hope we wouldn't have to, but if we did have to, we would get out of it in 30 days.
Yes.
So, any conversation from board members on this management agreement?
I'm really excited for it. I, I think that doing a three-year management agreement is, will be really helpful. I think, I mean, we have, we went to the YMCA three summers ago, or three springs ago to help us with the summer camp, which was really poorly, very few kids attended, it was not a broad cross-section of the community, it was not, the hours were not, were not ideal for working parents. So the Y took that over, they expanded the hours to almost 10 hours a day of camp. They doubled the number of kids that first year and they've worked on programming since that first year. So that's a three, the summer camp has been three years. Two years ago, we went to the Y and we said, will you manage the rec center programming? So they've been doing that for two years, they've really expanded what we've been able to do. They brought it almost back up to what it was when I first moved here 30 years ago, so, I mean, and I think it's better programming than, than we had at that time. We've really expanded the use of the pool. And then this last year, we went back to them and said, can we add on the senior center? And so this year, they're not managing the senior center, but they've been providing programming for the senior center and that has greatly expanded the, the number of pool activities for seniors. It's also worked the other way in that we're starting to use the senior center for non-senior activities. So I mean, I, you know, it's summer employment for kids, we've got counselor and training programs for the camps. You know, I feel like we have gone to them year after year after year, for the last two and a half years, saying, will you do this for us? And they have done it. And they've done it with one hand behind their back, I think, because they haven't had a management agreement that really allowed them to look at the scope of what could be possible at the rec center. And, you know, I, just looking at what they've been able to do so far, I am really, really pleased and really happy to do a three-year agreement with them. So I'm totally in favor of this.
Great, thank you Jeanie. Chad, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I think anytime that we can increase the programming for the youth in our community is a positive and I think the Y is set up to do this for us. I mean, I see children at the high school every day, a lot of them come from great families and do some great things, unfortunately, we have some children that need more structure and the Y is going to help provide that.
Mm-hmm, yep, they have a lot of national experience in providing that kind of programming, yep. Jeanie, anything from you?
No. I feel, I feel good, I like the way you separated out the two discussions, I think that helped everybody clarify. No, I think it's, I think it's great. I think they've done a wonderful job and I can only imagine what they'll do in the future with, with an agreement that really allows them to really work their magic.
Great.
Yeah.
That's great, we like magic. Bruce, speaking of magic, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Other than, I actually like the agreement, I think that the management skills that the Berkshire Family Y brings, and really the programmatic skills that they bring to this operation will be, will, will help expand the options for people in Bennington. And as a result, I know that there has been some question about, raised by actually a number of people to me as to the relationship between this, and I'll apologize if you've already dealt with this, but you know, the relationship between this and the purchasing policy that we had, had passed just a few meetings ago, and this really was in the works already. And in my view, policies look forward, they don't affect retroactively what is already going on. And so I feel comfortable with this, with this, particularly with the additions that have been made, I feel comfortable with this agreement and I will be with Bill Scully, happy to vote in favor of it even from a distance.
Great. Just to, just to that point Bruce, you know, I think the purchasing policy was created not to be a straitjacket, but to be something that allowed us to make sure that the town was giving equal opportunity and a fair, fair shake to different purveyors, but also to make sure that the taxpayer was getting a good deal. I think in a case like this where it's a single source, we look around, there's almost nobody else around that manages multiple pools, there is nobody else around that manages multiple pools and that has a national exercise program and hundreds of years of experience and scholarship programs and, you know, the depth that's going on here. So I know you and I have talked about this and I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, but I do think this is a, this is a different situation from say, a load of salt or something like that, where you might just want to try to get the cheapest one, so.
Sure, no, that's, that was my point precisely.
Yep, great, okay. So, any comments from the audience? Come on up. Please identify yourself and.
My name is Mary Ryan, I'm a Bennington resident and I just have a couple of questions regarding the, the fees that we're paying for the programming. I read an article dated November 27, 2018, in which we were paying the Y approximately $3,600 a month. According to this contractor, this management, we're paying $12,300 a month. And I'd just like justification as to the unbelievable increase that we are paying them and does this include the director's fees? Does this include your option one leadership structure? Is that coming out of the $147,000 that we're paying them? I just think that's an exorbitant jump and I really like justification for that.
It's not, and let's give you an explanation on that because it's really, it's, it's not a jump at all from.
From $3,600?
From previous years, no, it's not a jump. What, what we're looking at is a combination of fees coming into the Y and, and management agreement coming from the town, which comes to a total of about $300,000, which is about the same as it has been budgeted for several years. What, what's not included in that is, is the fact that a certain amount of town staff takes care of the recreation center and that, that number has not changed in a number of years, but that number should be factored into this when we think about non-resident rates. You know, the, the cost to the Bennington taxpayer of keeping the rec center going is relatively high, but it's not going up as a result of this agreement. And Stuart, would you like to just flesh that out or have I already stolen your thunder?
No, no, you're fine. The recreation center administrative cost that Donald just mentioned has actually decreased over the last five years. We found that we were not running as many programs, so we were not hiring as many part-time people to work at the center. We ultimately lost our executive director, unfortunately, and her salary because of the Y agreement was reduced in the budget itself. So what you have here is a management agreement that essentially covers four, three full-time positions and a fourth clerical position that do not exist under the Y's auspices at the center now. The one full-time employee that remains there will be relocated to the town offices. The Y will hire essentially a, an executive director. They already have hired the aquatics director, Morgan. They have hired a wellness director in Taylor Haynes. They are currently Y employees. So in our management agreement, those fees went from $3,000, which was a part-time interim director who would help develop new programs, to actually two full-time employees that were Y employees that we were reimbursing the Y for providing to us because we didn't have them and we didn't have to provide them. And we now will have a full staff of Y MCA employees at the center and that's what this, this really only covers the salaries of those individuals. It does not cover their benefits, it does not cover any of their training or their educational needs that the Y will now be responsible for. This management agreement turns the management of the recreation center over to the Berkshire YMCA.
So basically, the $146,000 is for salaries for three individuals?
For, yes, for, well, for three, four individuals actually. Now, let me just pull that up. It is, it's an administrative fee, which is a fee that pays for basic administration, is a branch director, an aquatics director and a health and wellness director, so yes. And then there's additional staff. They're going to be essentially employing all of our part-time employees, lifeguards, night staff, desk staff. All of those folks will, during this agreement, shift over to become YMCA employees.
Mr. Monks, break it down for us.
Yeah, I think, I think what's being, perhaps not being articulated super clearly is that we currently, under the current agreement, pay for several employees directly through town funds. So through this new agreement, the Y will be paying them, so we have to pay the Y directly for that. So the bottom line is, the, the budget is almost exactly identical to last year and instead of us paying directly for these employees, they'll be Y employees and we'll be paying the Y to pay for those employees' salaries. So there is no increase in cost to the town. It's just how it's reflected in the agreement.
No increase over last year, but, but Ms. Ryan, you know, your point is good and I think we would like to take this up at future budget sessions, you know, what is this costing the Bennington taxpayer and what's the, what's the ultimate cost to the Bennington taxpayer? But for this year, what we're proposing is that we, we keep it the same, even though there's a significant contribution from, from the Bennington taxpayer, and that we not let it go up from last year, but that we keep it the same while we, we sort all these things out. I'm, I'm happy that you're thinking about these budgetary things and I'm happy that you're thinking about the Bennington taxpayer as, as are we. But for this year, it would be, the total net to Bennington would be what it was last year. Except that we would get better programming and I think they have more employees.
They have more employees, yes.
They have more employees now too, so anyways. Okay, other comments? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Scott Trafton. I sent all of you an email, hopefully this week, you all received it. And with the programming, I just had a question on whether or not there was any conversation with the Y about the swim program, because I know Mr. Heard.
Yes, in fact, there was and, and the, the current recreation center swim lessons do not meet that standard. It is the intent of the YMCA to bring our current swim lessons up to those standards.
We teach Red Cross currently program and you were talking about the YMCA 6, I think?
Right, because I, right, because I'd spoken with the aquatics director and he said they were rec center-created swim lessons that had been around for a while. I've been here for 30 years and I think my sister's, in her 30s, took those swim lessons, the same ones my kids took the last four, five years ago.
Yeah, they're based on a Red Cross standard and, but it's the Y's intent, as I understand it, to, to bring those lessons up to, to the level that you mentioned in your, not necessarily right away because we've got to do some education, we've got to teach our lifeguards how to, how to teach those lessons and reformat what we currently do.
Right, no, that'd be great because I know the YMCA threw out their old, their old instructions three years ago and created a whole new one after the, all the reports from the Center for Disease Control and they're more focused on life-saving skills right away, because, well, I sent, I have this sheet in front of me, I sent you guys the statistics, like 10 people drowned every year, or every day actually in the U.S. for that, so it's focused on preventing more of that, so that'd be great if we could get the more up-to-date swim program.
Thank you for that input and also thank you in your email, which we all did receive, for your thoughts on, on budgets and how we pay for this and the sort of equity pieces there and we'll work on that, but we hope you'll participate in those conversations next year around this time. Thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other comments? Nicole? Oops, sorry, I'm supposed to let you state your own name.
Oh, sorry, Nicole Gasswamy, I'm the coach for the Bennington Marauders. So I just have a question about the start date for these new employees. Do you know when that transition might be taking place?
The, the agreement takes effect, should the board adopt it, as early as November 4th, but there will be a transition into moving those employees out of the town's employ and into the YMCA. That's going to take some time, but we expect that everything should be fully in place by January 1.
Okay, and just one other thing, so as we look to work with the Y, I actually did start those conversations just to get some more information. So prior to this, it was viewed that our guppies program was a competitor to the swim lessons that are offered at the rec center, yet I was told there is a waiting list for the swim lessons at the recreation center and they can't accommodate all of the kids they have now. So I'm just wondering how we can be viewed as a competition if we are helping bring more. more services to the pool?
We'll cross that particular question and answer in a year. We have a year to figure that out.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice problem to have, I'm glad we're, uh...
No, it's a great problem to have, it's just, it's that view of us being a competition when in fact we're, we're really not.
Well, we're trying to de-escalate all that ourselves.
Sure, no, I know, I just, it's just very frustrating to hear that we're a competition when, and we're happy to work with the Y, we're going to do that and find ways to do that, but we're not taking away something that the Y is trying to offer at this point. In fact, we're supplementing what we're offering to our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Come on up, Rose.
I'm Rose Telford. I have a question to do with the senior center. Is, is there a reason why we can't have somebody to help doing manual stuff like move tables and all that? They're heavy, and I don't think it's women's work to do.
Not entirely on topic, but Stuart, would you do the best you can with it, please?
Well, I, I think it depends on the, on the time of day that these things occur. I mean, we have maintenance staff that if we know what the programs are and they need a particular kind of setup before that program can take place, I think we can try to accommodate those kinds of requests, but at the present time, we don't have sufficient funds in the budget to hire somebody else to do that work.
That's not a very good answer.
So, Rose, we're really talking about this management agreement between the Y on the, on the rec center tonight, so we're not really talking about the senior center right now, but if you have any other questions about the Y, go ahead.
I'll call you when we need some.
Okay, thank you. Well, actually, you know, do have Carrie call us. I mean, when, when, when stuff needs to be done, you know, have Carrie be in touch with Stuart.
Carrie is not afraid to be in touch with Stuart, I can tell you.
Carrie's not afraid to be in touch with Stuart, we hear, all right, so.
And Rose, if it's after school, I can have...
You have all what goes on, so why does somebody have to come do that? What things are going on?
We have the town manager.
I'm telling you, they move a lot of stuff today. I don't know.
I'll volunteer the football team to come help you out anytime after school. Just give us a call, we'll come right over.
The football team?
Yes.
So they're, they have to move stuff, people come in, they take them out, they come in, and they move them, and they come out, and they move them.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other comments about the YMCA management agreement?
I just, I just have one more. I know that this is a three-year management agreement, and I'm just thinking in terms of the future, is, is the ultimate goal to make Bennington Rec Center a YMCA? Or, I'm, I'm unsure of the direction of this. I know that the programs have increased and the, and the pool schedule has changed and things of that sort for the better to accommodate the public, but long-range, long-range goals?
You know, so who, who knows, but I would say this board does not have any aspiration to get rid of our recreation center, our community recreation center, but we have found in the YMCA a strong and capable partner that's willing to help us do a lot of things that we haven't been able to do on our own prior to this. And so, I, I think I speak for the board when I say, no, this is not, this is not going to be turned over to the YMCA, at least not with the current board, but we are looking to tap into their expertise and to, and to work with a partnership with them so that we can use their strengths and use their expertise, which are formidable, and for the people who choose to, that they also can join the Y and not only use the Bennington Recreation Center, but also North Adams and Pittsfield and, and all of the YMCA's nationwide. So, there's no, there's no ulterior motive, there's no long-range, let's get rid of the rec center thing. This is really just looking for expertise and looking for competent management and looking to try to bring, you know, bring our recreation center into a, a new century and a, a much more satisfying, hopefully, community partner.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, so, unless there's further discussion, I would certainly love to move this off of our to-do list. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Just one more comment.
Oh, sure.
I'm Rachel Trimble, I'm from Shasberry. One question, I remember last week the director mentioned that fundraising is part of the management agreement, and that any funds that are donated by the community of Bennington and surrounding areas goes into a pot and then is dispersed between Bennington, North Adams, and Pittsfield.
No, that's not what she said, it would stay local.
No, she did say that it would be dispersed.
It's, I think it's, it's nuanced. So, for instance, it goes into a pot. Right now, Bennington is the recipient of funds that have been raised in the Berkshires. So, it's not that, it's not that the Y doesn't know what the contribution, how much they've raised in each community, but for instance, for three years running, our scholarship funds have come from the Berkshires, so they've had excess that they've shared with us. So that's, so it goes into a general pot, and if there is greater need in one area than another, and there are funds that are available, then there will be sharing. But if we raise money in this community, the hope is that at some point we'll break even and we'll raise enough funds in this community to support our own scholarships. Right now, we do not.
Is that transparent to the businesses who may contribute?
I think it is, yeah.
I think it should be.
Well, let's make sure it is, okay? But, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, there's no reason for it not to be.
Fair point, but the intention's good, you know, and we want to try to have as much scholarship available as possible.
All right, so, right, so, but it also would affect eventually the Marauders, because we do our fundraising with the understanding that we use the Bennington pool. So please make sure that it is transparent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the management agreement between the Town of Bennington and the Berkshire Family YMCA for three years.
Bruce, would you like to second that?
Yes.
Just checking to see if we're still there.
I'm still there.
All right.
Listening to the discussions.
Any, any further discussion from the board on this? Hearing none, I would call the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I don't know if I heard, oh, we heard from Bill, so Bill has texted that he would be in support of this also. And so, Stuart, I think, do you have what you need to get?
I have what I need, thank you.
Them going? That's great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Citizen Ree, for your comments and your thoughtful observations, and stay engaged, please. We, we look forward to having further conversations as things roll out. And special thanks to Jess Rumlo and to the Berkshire YMCA for giving us this incredible opportunity to expand recreation in our community. Okay, the next item on our agenda, item number seven, is the Applegate Path Grant. Dan, and, and if anybody, yeah, this is a good time to clear the room if anybody is not interested in path grants. Thank you, Mark. Bruce, do you want to stay on, or do you want to check in?
No, I'm happy to stay on.
All right, we'll just leave you here bobbing along in front of Jimmy Joe's mic.
So we're all settled here. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Dan Monks, I'm the assistant town manager for Bennington, and with me is Mark Anders, who works for the Bennington County Regional Commission, you're the transportation planner, is that your title?
Yeah.
Close enough? Oh, sorry. I'm Dan Monks, Mark Anders. So, we've been, before you folks, at least one other occasion, if not two other occasions, to talk about the, this pathway from the Applegate Housing Complex to Willa Brook and on to the Molly Stark School. We, I think we've articulated in the past how important it is to have safe ways for kids in that vicinity to get to their school. Right now, though, if they miss the bus, they don't get to go to school, because there's no way to walk there safely from, from Applegate. So, this, this pathway is actually Mark's brainchild, his, his baby, and he's been, he's been working hard on it for a long time. We did design it, we got it permitted, and we bid it out, and the bids came in exceedingly high for many reasons, including the tariffs, and also just the fact that construction has been booming recently, and not a lot of construction, we only got two bids, and not a lot of folks were willing to bid on this particular project, because it is relatively, it was relatively small. But we have identified an additional funding source, and VTrans, with the Vermont Agency of Transportation, and they have encouraged us to reapply, since we now have bids with, with actual pricing, we know pretty much exactly what we're in for. And with these additional funds, if we're granted them, we know that we'll be able to construct the project. So, really, all we need tonight from you folks is to go ahead to apply for the grant, then a grant agreement will come in, and at that point, we'll get approval for you, from you folks to enter into the grant agreement. But tonight really is about applying for the funds. I don't want Mark to spend a lot of time filling out an application, if you folks don't want him to do that, but he's offered to do that if you folks would like us to proceed. We will seek, there is a 20% local match, we will seek additional funds from our partners, who include the school district, the healthcare system, who else, there are lots of great people who'll help us out, Housing Vermont, and Whipstock Hill Preservation Society, and the United Way. So, we'll be working with those folks to help us raise that match. We feel very confident with additional, these additional funds, we can, we can move forward very quickly because the project is designed and approved, so we'd actually hope to begin in the spring if, if the funding comes through. So, if you have any other questions, any other questions, I'm sure Mark would be happy to answer them.
We, we probably don't have too many questions, because we have seen this several times before, but I would like to just take the opportunity to read from this memo, two sentences that say, "The path will be ADA compliant, lit, maintained in the winter, and provides safe walking route to the Molly Stark School. Children from Applegate are now bused to Molly Stark School less than half a mile away because Orchard Road, which connects Applegate to the school, is unsafe to walk on. Students from Applegate have a high rate of absenteeism. When they miss the bus, they often miss school." So, this path is not just a, some fluffy rec path, although I do like a good rec path. This is really about connecting our, some of our, our really important communities directly to school.
And we've, we've heard consistently from the school that it would be very helpful for the school district to have this additional access point for, for kids to get to school.
The, the 20% local match is hard to swallow, you know, that's a lot of money, there's no question about it, but I think this is a really important project and something that we really need to get done, so we are not deciding at this particular moment whether or not we pay the local match, we are deciding whether or not we think it's a good, a good idea for them to apply for the funds. Go ahead, Chad.
Does work by the DPW or town employees, would that help as like an in-kind? Um, not directly. We have some work that, that we are hoping that the DPW folks can do, but it will not be considered as a match, but it can reduce the overall cost of the project, so that is, we also believe that this is a worst-case scenario funding amount, because we have value engineered the project and reduced the amount of boardwalk, that's the most expensive part of it. So we think this is a very high estimate, but we don't want to get caught again where we don't have enough funds to do the project. So we've, we're using, we're using the original bids on the originally designed project as the basis for this, for this funding request, in the hopes that the bids come in significantly lower.
Go ahead, Jean.
Have you explored using the CDC at all? Is that a possibility?
Uh, we haven't, given what the state requires for certifications.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
It's really difficult to get, folks, it really does require folks to be fairly sophisticated contractors, which is why a project this size often costs more than it should.
Yeah, it would just be a great way to incorporate them and for them to give back to their community, but I understand the constraints hereunder. I think it's great, there's just been a whole lot of work that was done at Applegate, refurbishing that development, so this is like the crowning jewel.
And we've had a great relationship with Housing Vermont and, and Shire's Housing, you know, I mean, it's just the project, and they're very anxious and supportive to have this project done, so.
All right, so, do you need a motion, or do you, are you happy with the sense of the board?
I think a motion would be helpful, just because Mark has to send up proof that you guys approved the application to, in the application, so if we have something on record.
For the purposes of discussion, may I have a motion one way or the other, please?
So move.
So, Jean has moved to...
Accept the grant application to complete the Molly Stark School path.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. Any further discussion? Any comments from the audience? No? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Bruce. Opposed and abstentions?
Let's see, Bill.
Oh, yeah, let's see if Bill, no, Bill didn't weigh in on that one, but, so Bill is abstaining on that one.
Okay, thank you very much.
So thank you for this work, and go forth and prosper and get that money.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is, so this is, we talked about it at our last meeting, some folks, many of whom are with us tonight, had suggested that we might like to create a climate change resolution. They had worked on a draft, which they circulated, it may not be suitable for, for all of us, but it might be. I think at that last meeting, I asked if this board wanted to have a conversation about whether or not a symbolic, not symbolic, but a sort of meaningful statement in the form of resolution would, would feel good to this board about climate change, and I guess my feeling is that I would love to have the, a small number of board members be willing to do some thinking about this. So I don't, I haven't had a chance to ask anybody about this, but I wonder if this might be something that, while we're talking, if there might be two or three of you who would be willing to do a little pre-work on this for the board.
Count me in.
Thank you, thank you, Bruce.
So, I would be interested, I mean, I, I, in reading through it, the only concern I had about it was, I think, the added, the last, the last furthermore, or whereas...
Yeah, that's unacceptable to me, too, yeah.
Well, I'll, it's just that, I mean, the energy, it says that the Energy Committee will take, will take actions, I don't have it in front of me, but they can only recommend, just because of the nature of who they are, but that was, I mean, that was just a wording change. So are you thinking that we shouldn't vote on the resolution, but we should take another, we should have a small group to...
I think that resolution, I think the resolution as written has some pretty big potential impacts for the town, and I think it would be worth a, a work group, thinking about it.
Well, I'm interested, too.
And chewing on it a little bit. And so it sounds like Bruce and, and Jeanie, would you have any interest?
Sure.
Is this something you might be willing to do?
Sure.
And it, it feels like the starting point might be this, this presentation that's been given to us.
Okay.
And, but I think also really reflecting on what's meaningful, what, what moves things forward, but, but also, let's remember that we just created an Energy Committee, and we just empowered them to do some thinking on this, and we really want to continue to empower them to do some, some heavy thinking. Their first meeting is tomorrow night, and they're going to have an organizational meeting, so people are welcome to come to that. That will be at the BCRC at 7:00, and then at that point, they'll be moving forward. And just, just by way of explanation on that to, Bill Scully's not able to be the, the select board designate on that committee, and Jeanie had offered, now if there's anybody else on the board that would like to, you're certainly welcome to, but if, if this board feels comfortable with having Jeanie do that on sort of an interim basis while Bill is on medical leave, I would, I would certainly like to know that.
No, it's fine, Jeanie, you can do it.
Bruce, how does that sound to you?
That, that makes sense to me.
And Jeanie, you're still willing? Chad, you're okay about that?
So, do you foresee those of us that are going to take a, a look at the resolution to make recommendations and go back to where it originated, or not?
Well, I think, this has to be the board's work.
Right.
So I think, I think the idea is that the board expressed an interest, to me at the last meeting, in moving forward some sort of resolution along this nature. And so I would love to have board members sit down with that, with the, what the community has, what this group of people has put forward, but with your own thinking, too, and, and make it something that you feel would be worthy of our consideration.
Okay, it just seems like, since it originated outside of us, that it would, they might not agree with what we agree with, and then it's not a resolution that they would support anymore.
Jean, I'm sort of with you, I'm, I'm thinking that it would be nice if we just had a joint sit-down, because I think, part of what I'd like to understand is if there are things that, so for instance, the three-month timeframe for the Energy Committee, was that just, you know... three-month timeframe for the Energy Committee, was that just, you know, three months sounded great, or was there a particular reason that that came about? I think we may have some thoughts about whether three months is too fast, or whether that seems just right, you know? So from my perspective, I would enjoy sitting down and just hearing why, you know, why the particular things that are in the resolution are there, and just making sure that there are things that we can commit to that we actually can do.
And it could be in the reverse. We could take a dive and, you know, make some suggestions and then bring it back. It could work either way.
This is the kind of thing that I think is difficult for a select board to work on, do wordsmithing in open session. You know, I do think...
Oh, I totally, I don't think it should be open session.
Not that it's anything to hide, but just that it requires a lot of kicking around and considering implications, and yeah, we wouldn't get out of here until 3:00 in the morning, so.
No, no, no.
So I would like to suggest, you know, a work group and work on this, and feel free to talk to who you want to about it.
Okay, great.
And, you know, come back to the board with a suggestion that you feel would be appropriate for the town, appropriate, you know, given the current Energy Committee's status, and yet meaningful.
Okay.
And honors their...
And honors.
Honors their concerns, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that sound like them?
Yes, yes.
Bruce, how does that sound to you?
That sounds perfectly fine to me.
Okay.
Can we get a sense?
Sure. Let's open this up, and I'm going to ask you to be brief tonight, Barbara, brief, okay? Because we're trying to get, move this meeting on, so five minutes for everybody.
Yes, of course. So the point is, this is an emergency. This isn't a time when we should sit and ponder and think things and be consumed with getting everything right. This is an emergency, and it's something that we have to move forward with as quickly as we can. That's why the resolution to declare a climate emergency is important. And we would really like for the work that's been done in other places in Vermont, other Energy Committees, Efficiency Vermont, the standard, whatever it was, a climate conference that the governor called, all of that's been done. And so there's, there may be questions, how does it fit with Bennington? But what we don't want are delays.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Ethan. I'm a registered Vermont voter and a student at Bennington College. Obviously, I agree that this is an emergency. I also recognize that this is an incredible opportunity, not only on the commerce side of things, but also to alleviate Bennington from a lot of its poverty and a lot of other issues. Three opportunities that I see are regarding food, energy, and water. Getting away from fossil fuels as soon as possible and effectively moving towards clean renewable energy is a win-win for everybody. Everybody has to have energy. Having helix, small helix wind turbines in town, decentralizing our grid to solar and wind, so that we can produce as much power for Bennington is an incredible investment. I recommend that you look into that, instead of getting our energy even from northern Vermont, as supposed by Efficiency Vermont or Green Mountain Power, who are also allies. Also, science says that Vermont is going to get very wet. We're going to get the weather of England. We already are starting to see some of that trend, so investing in low-cost rainwater, capturing technologies for homes and for schools and businesses is a wise decision. And again, that is renewable, and we can glean that. And then also food, having some local food distribution center where different states in New England and New York can bring their food, sell it to people in the town at an affordable price. Over time, I think that that will have an incredible impact on people in the town, so that people aren't subject to buying cheap food at fast-food restaurants and Walmart. And that, from three years of being here, that's something I've noticed, not necessarily firsthand, but it is a problem. So looking at this at all angles and relocating, this is an incredible opportunity, and it's an emergency.
Ethan, before you step down, I'd just like to tell you that we're very glad to hear your voice here tonight.
Thank you.
I've had the opportunity to see you in other circumstances, and you represent the college very well, and thank you for that. I really do hope that the Energy Committee's work is substantial and meaningful and transformational, and I hope that you will participate in that, because our hope in creating an Energy Committee is that they would take on all of these different things, and they would help us prioritize, and they would really help us get down to the nub of where we could be making strategic investments. So, you know, they're public meetings, and they would welcome the kind of input that you have to give.
Wonderful. Thank you, Donald.
Thanks.
Ethan, would you also just spell your last name for Nancy?
Yes, K.O.S.S.
K.O.S.S.
Hyphen Smith.
Thank you.
And my name is Marsh Hudson App, and I had a nice talk to give to you, but considering we want to spend about one minute, I'm going to can the talk and just say that the real concern that I have is about our Energy Committee and that it not get caught up in institutional logjamming. It can take a long time to get a group organized. I was a minister for 45 years, and I know how long and slow committees can be to get things done. And we're really, I am and we are really feeling concerned that this is an emergency and that our house is on fire. And if somebody yelled "fire" in here, we probably would stop talking and go to work promptly to fight the fire. And that's what we're hoping for this committee, and I sense that you're sharing that vision, and we're just going to be right there cheering and champing and hoping to pull this thing together as quickly as we can to get things moving, not that there aren't long-term things to do, too. So thank you very much for your support, for caring for the earth, and for your support for this committee getting to work.
Thank you. I wish you could have been part of the interviews that we went through as we interviewed committee members, but there is a lot of passion on the Energy Committee for the topic of energy and global climate change and food systems, and it's just a really great group, and I think it will be made even better by having strong participation from people like you.
Thank you.
So please do participate. Thank you. So I don't think we need a motion on this unless anyone else does. I'd like to just have you...
So it's the three of us? Yeah, so can we, Jean and Bruce, do you think that on the 11th, which would be our next meeting here, that would give us two weeks to look at the resolution, to sit down with folks that presented the resolution?
And town staff.
Yeah, and then the, and town staff, and then come back? And we will have also had the first Energy Committee meeting as well, and just looked at what we're going to need to do. I mean, there will be some ramping up that'll need to be done for the Energy Committee, and, you know, I totally understand the bureaucratic piece of that, so we're trying to cut through that, but we want to make sure that we have an informed committee.
Nor do we want to cut them off at the knees. We just created them, so we want to...
We haven't even met yet, but they will tomorrow. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you all for coming, and thank you for your input. We appreciate that. So I'm going to move on to item number nine. Only one, two, three, four, five more to go, gang, so hang in there.
We're on schedule, though. We're exactly on schedule.
We are going to talk about liquor licenses. Stuart, what have you got for us on that?
I have one new liquor license for the Avocado Pit, taking over the location that was Cilantro's, and a renewal for Miller's Toll. The first page needs your signatures, and I have placed a paper clip on the new liquor license, so you can get to that page and sign it as well.
Okay. We're psyched to have the Avocado Pit coming into the old Cilantro's.
Yes.
Rick Craft, et cetera, right? Going to be serving up all sorts of good food, so. The next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Stuart, let's keep that there.
I have no action items for you this evening. I do want to say, for the community and for you folks, we've all now heard the news and read the news about Energizer's closing. Unfortunately, we don't have much information coming from the corporate headquarters at this time, although I suspect that they will begin to ramp up their releases. We don't know whether it's a long-term closure or a short-term closure. We do know there are 70 to 80 jobs at risk, and the state of Vermont is, Department of Labor and the local economic development folks are getting together to deal with the employees that may be displaced by this closing. And there is a group that Dan Monks is attempting to start up of individuals will take a look at perhaps proactive reuses of those buildings if and when they become available. They are massive structures, two, three, and five-story structures, and this is going to be a very interesting look at what may or may not be able to happen with those buildings. There is some contamination being handled currently by Energizer, and so we really don't have enough information at this point to do any really, anything but speculate, but I think that there are wheels in motion at the local level to try to ramp up the information and gathering and making some educated decisions. Secondly, I'll talk just a little bit about the salt prices. I'm not going to get into who won the bid, but the salt prices actually came in 3% less than last year, which is a really good sign. And I was talking with our Public Works Director today. He indicates that we are fully staffed and ready for winter, and because we're ready so early, I suspect that winter won't come until sometime near Christmas, which would be all right. I agree. We've had, we've had snow flies in Snow Falls in late October, early November, and I'm hoping that we're not looking at that same schedule. On the PFOA projects, I gave you a brief rundown of Contracts 5, 6, and 7, which are already underway. Contracts 8 and 9 have gone out to bid. You might have seen the bid advertisements in the banner, and so they are looking to come in within the next, I think it's a 30-day window. Negotiations continue on the Morgan Spring delivery system. We had a very lengthy conversation with the individuals who are interested in financing the construction of the new system, and I think they understand what the town is looking for now very clearly. We hope to hear from them soon. Not much else on the opioid lawsuit. There have been a number of settlements that have been discussed in the news. Many of those focus on one or two of the manufacturers. As I indicated early on, our lawsuit is against all of the manufacturers, the distributors, the pharmacies, and the benefit management groups that control the flow of, and the price of drugs as they come through some of the medical insurance systems. The last I knew, Springfield was considering joining the suit, and there was an article several days ago that indicated Brattleboro was also talking about perhaps joining us as well. And I think I'll stop there.
Can I just ask one follow-up?
Absolutely.
So I think, I don't remember who, but someone mentioned putting hard copies of the IACP survey around town? Did that happen?
Those have not been done yet, but we were going to be moving on that tomorrow. The date for the surveys to be filled out has been extended.
Oh, good.
As of today, there'll be an announcement, I think, that'll appear tomorrow.
And is there a sense of where they'll be?
More than likely, we would look to place them at the town offices and perhaps at the Bennington Free Library.
And we also, is it possible to put them in the schools? I'm just thinking in the elementary schools, since parents go there to pick up kids? I mean, town office, I mean, I love a town office, but it is not, not everybody goes there every day.
Jesus, really? All right. I learned something.
Stuart goes there every day, every single day.
Every day. We can take a look at that. Yeah, I'm not sure how effective that would be, and perhaps Chad can help on that.
I can, sorry. I just, I know with some of the security protocols, it might be hard to get in and get the surveys.
Actually, all the schools?
No, so it's been, I mean, there's, there are little waiting areas at all three schools, at the elementary schools. Anyway.
Why don't you, why don't you take this up, see if we can figure something out?
Sure, we'll see what we can do.
The point is, we want the IACP survey out there, so anybody can get it, who wants it. It's online, but we're talking about paper copies, too.
And there will be announcement tomorrow. The schedule for two public forums has been set, November 5th and November 7th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Second Congregational Church. IACP personnel will be there to take comments from the public, as well as having access to the survey. They will also be in town that entire week, conducting additional interviews, interviews with our staff, as well as interviews with those folks who have indicated a willingness to speak with them privately. So that, I'm sorry, I didn't include that, but that's moving along relatively quick.
So that was November 5th and November 7th?
Yes, it's Tuesday and Thursday.
And what, what time?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, at Second Congregational Church?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. It is, it is kind of grim news about Energizer, and I'm glad that you're on it, and I'm glad that BCRC's on it, and I'm glad that town staff is thinking about it. Obviously, we have to make that a priority, and we will. Bruce, I'm going to be looking at my phone here, so it may be a little, I'll try not to hang up on you, but we're going to talk, we're going to talk about the upcoming agenda. So we are now talking about November 11th, and right now, we are looking at, Shannon, are we looking at recreation marketing downtown?
No, that's 25th.
That's the 25th, okay.
We're looking at top maybe priorities, and we're going to do the emergency resolution as well.
And I also have warned the acceptance of Corcoran's Way. If you recall, Habitat came and spoke with us. You directed me to get out there and get it done. There has been a public notice. This will be a public hearing, and there is a site visit scheduled before the Select Board meeting, so we'll get that information to you. We'll meet at the site and then re, re, what's the word I'm looking for?
Sign, re-sign, rename?
Re-convene?
No, reconvene. Thank you very much, Stuart.
Here, at 6:00.
At 6:00.
It is late.
So Stuart, one of the, one of the things that went by kind of quickly there is that we have, Jeanie and I have talked about having a conversation, fairly high-level conversation about priorities for the upcoming budget year.
Okay.
General priorities, so not which sidewalk to fix, but what we would like to see emphasized in the upcoming budget. So categorize it fairly well? And then, yes, so then Shannon, on the, on the 25th, we're looking at some sort of a joint topic at that point, right? Okay, great.
And this kind of economic development.
Economic development, marketing.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so you'll pull that, you'll pull that together for us in terms of what's going on and what we need to know about? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we are going to move to other business. Let's start with Jean.
Okay.
I know you have a few things.
Three things. One of them is actually from Jim. He wanted me to mention this in his absence. He has been participating in the Stay to Stay program and told me that there are 25 people moving to our area from that program. Kids, businesses, anyway, it's just really, really good news. The Pocket Park next to Katy Cleaver, in between Katy Cleaver and Fiddlehead, there's been some major progress there. It's absolutely gorgeous. And I got an email about a program called Button Up Bennington County. It's about insulating your home, and I just wanted to read to the public when it is. It's Sunday, November 10th, at 2:00 PM, right here. So if you're interested in finding out about insulating your home, this is something you might want to attend. That's it.
Jeanie?
Nothing. Nothing.
Chad?
I have two, uh, one's informational, the, um, Mount Anthony High School Music and Drama Departments will be presenting, um, Mary Poppins, uh, on November seventh, eighth, and ninth, uh, tickets went on sale today, and I heard they're selling fast, they're not sold out, but projected that they will sell out, uh, so tickets are on sale at the high school main office, or through a website, if you can't make it down there, at M-A-U-H-S-V-T. dot book, T-I-X, dot com.
Say that again?
Uh, M-A-U-H-S-V-T. Dot book. T-I-X. Dot com. There is a dollar twenty-five surcharge if you buy online.
Okay.
Um, but I'm hearing some great, great things, some rave reviews, it's going to be amazing from what I'm hearing, so I'm going to be going twice Thursday and Friday night, so... Um, and also, I'd like to take my opportunity while I sit here, uh, the football season ended on Friday night unfortunately with a loss in the playoffs, and I just want to really thank the community, uh, and the family, and, um, all the support we received this year, we had a good season, a lot of guys, um, working hard, and we started seeing the results on the field, it's been a long time since we, it's been ten, ten years since we, um, had this many wins, and people coming out and supporting us, and as the coach, I really appreciate the community support and the backing of our program and our players, and just really recognizing that, uh, our guys are putting in good work and doing good things, so thank you to the town of Bennington and surrounding towns.
Thank you, Chad.
I don't know if I can adequately speak to it, but I know that tomorrow at three o'clock, the BCRC is doing a tour of the biomass systems, is that right?
Yes.
At the, at the Mount Anthony High School, and then over at Applegate, so for people who are interested in seeing those facilities, those will be going on tomorrow, and, um, the, uh, Energy Committee, as I mentioned, will be having its organizational meeting at seven o'clock at the Bennington Regional Commission Office, um, next to Jay's, I can't remember the address there.
One-one-one South Street.
What is it?
One-one-one South Street.
Is that right? Okay, all right, great. Okay, we have a need to go into executive session on a contract matter and a personnel matter, so I would need a motion to go into executive session?
So move, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.